Order. Can you please join me in a flag salute?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you for the record, all members of, the current members of the council are present with one vacancy. And with that, is there any announcements, any additions to the agenda, staff? No? Any declaration of a party conflict, contrast of interest, bias, et cetera? I jumbled that. Nope. All right. Opportunity for a public comment, and we do have one public comment, but I need to read my public comment opening statement first. Am I good? Am I missing something?
Sorry. I believe she wanted to talk under the local-
Oh, thank you.
The transient occupancy.
Okay. Carol, do you want to wait for that, or do you want to do it now?
Uh, I mean, whenever I should do it.
Okay. We'll wait, we'll wait till that comes up. Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? That's not ready to speak to that, or general? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Thank you. We'll come back to that when it comes, for Carol's comment, when it comes to that item. That leads us to the consent agenda for July 21st, both the work session minutes and the regular session minutes. What would council like to do?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty.
Council Patty?
Yes, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented before us.
I'll second it.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries four to zero. Uh, opportunity for presentations, Marion Soil and Water Conservation District.
Yes, we have a presentation this evening with Brenda Sanchez. She's the director of the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District. You met her when we were doing the neighborhood improvement grants, and she applied for one. Um, I was able to meet with her, learn a little bit more about what they do, and thought that would be wonderful for you to hear, especially since they're in our community. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Brenda. She could share a little bit, and then you can ask questions of her.
Thank you, Julia. Well, hello, council. Thank you for giving some time to present. Uh, my name is Brenda Sanchez. I'm the district manager of the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District. We're located right on Third Avenue, next to U.S. Bank. Um, we've been there about three, little, almost four years now. We are a special district, just like your school district or your fire district. Uh, we are funded through grants and levy taxes. And our mission is to, um, provide technical assistance, education, and funding to help, uh, improve conservation in our district, thriving lands, uh, clean water, uh, soil health. Uh, what I've given you there is our annual report we just did, and we actually look back on 10 years of our work in there, and we highlight all of our different programs. One of the things where we do is technical assistance. So if you are a landowner or a homeowner, and you're looking to do some work on your property related to conservation, which could be anything from, you know, removing weeds, or putting in a hedgerow for pollinators, or maybe you have a farm and you've got a big gully going through your field, and we need, you can come to us, and we can help you, uh, figure out how to correct that and, and make changes. We also do conservation planning. Uh, we can sit with you and go onsite and, uh, talk to you about all the things you want to do with your land, and help you come up with a conservation plan. Uh, maybe you have horses, and you have manure, and you need to know how to store it, and how to apply it to your ground. Uh, we can help with that kind of information. Um, we're a public service. Uh, we don't come at any cost, so you can call us at any time. And, uh, if you want, we'll come out onsite. We have experts. We have, we have a natural areas planner, and she does wetlands and riparian areas. We have two farm planner, uh, ag planners, uh, focused on livestock, pasture, soil and crops. Um, we have an urban conservations, which is currently vacant, but, uh, we'll be hiring for that in the next couple of months. Um, we also have other little programs. We do education. Uh, we do salmon watch every year. We take kids in, uh, grades K through 12 out on, by pack saddle, up on the San Yam, and we give them five stations where they learn about different things, about water quality and the life cycle of salmon, and then they get to see the salmon in the river spawning, hopefully, that day. Um, big, people love it. We get lots of requests for it every year. Um, we also have a small urban, it's called the Little Project, Little Habitat Project. It's our urban program, so if you're a homeowner, uh, you can enroll in this, and you can either, somebody can come out and help you put in backyard habitat or front yard habitat, uh, you know, again, hedgerows, or, uh, helping you with your groundsaping and stuff. So, and then you can get certified, and you get a sign that goes in front of your home that says you're a certified Little Habitat, uh, program. And our first, uh, we just started that program a little over a year ago, and our first house was certified, was here in Stateon. So that was real exciting. We now have over, uh, 140 enrollees throughout the district, which is pretty much Marion County proper. Um, and so we're, and have certified 31 homes. So, work is ongoing. We found little niches to help everyone play a part in conservation. Um, we also have funding, grant, grants. Uh, we have a conservation assistance grant, uh, which helps landowners apply those conservation projects to their ground. Um, they can apply for up to $10,000 with a 25% match. Um, we also have our partner grant. That's a new one. Uh, I was talking to Julia about this one. Uh, this is in our third year of a pilot program, but it's to help our partners. Uh, you guys would be a partner, City of Stateon. You can apply for this grant. It's up to $35,000 a year, uh, to help with implementation. Uh, you can get, use it for education, outreach, uh, project implementation, anything that helps further our mission through you, we'll, we'll look to help fund that. I know, you know, we were talking about the, the, I don't want to bring it up, but the subject going on with the dams and the Detroit dams, and how there could be some issues in the future. Um, you know, I was telling Julia, maybe there's a role we can help play with, uh, play in that, to help assist the, or help mitigate some of the, uh, problems that come out of that, if it occurs. So, um, the board is very open to walk-ins, you know? If you had a big project and needed some help that worked toward our mission, we would, the board would do what they could to assist in your ask. That's the gist of it. We, we do a lot of outreach. You might see us around, just around Marion County at different events. We just did the San Yam Summer Festival. We had a great time. We interacted with over 500 people, because we clicked all the people that came to our booth, so that was really cool. Um, and we're just, uh, you know, uh, anything you can come, you can come to us, and if we don't, if we can't help you, we'll try to get you to the right people. Sometimes it's a different agency. Some people call us for water rights. Well, we don't deal with water rights, but we'll get you to the right people at the Water Resources Department. So we have a whole span of technical assistance we can give.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Kerry?
Thank you very much for this update. This is very encouraging. I did not realize you guys did what you do.
Oh, good.
And I also want to say that the building and the grounds are looking very nice.
Thank you. That was something else I was going to point out. Uh, we are, uh, we got a mural artwork coming, and we're going to go, uh, once I get that, I'm going to go to your art commission to get that approved. So we're, we're hoping to put a mural on the front-facing side on Third Avenue, and we're greenscaping the property. Uh, we're putting native plants along the creek there, uh, dealing with the invasives, and putting a pollinator hedgerow on our back of our parking lot, so lots of cool things there.
Mr. Mayor? Council Patty?
Thank you. Uh, you had made a comment about dealing with the invasives. I assume you just mean plants?
No, we, we haven't, uh, right now, we're currently experiencing the Emerald Ash Bore. It's a nasty little beetle that's coming into our ash trees. Um, it's, we've only got a few sightings of it around, but it's really killed off a lot of ash in eastern part of those United States. So we're working now to get outreach on that. We'll put traps in. So we do pests, uh, in general, um, but we try to focus on things that we can be, um, have an impact. So, do we spend a lot of money getting rid of blackberry? Probably not, but we do look for those weeds that are, and could be coming. So like garlic mustard is one that's showing up in our county, so we've been spending money to help patch them out right away. Um, does that kind of answer?
Yeah.
Do you have something specific?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, good.
So we were just on a tour down in, uh, Sullivan Springs, and we're kind of hearing about some issues that we have over there in the wetlands, uh, where beavers unfortunately are causing a bunch of backed-up water problems over there. And I was just wondering, is that something that we would, I don't know, call on you guys for any kind of education or assistance on how to thwart their attempts?
Well, yeah, that's, that's a difficult situation. Um, we don't trap or do any animal, uh, removal or anything like that. I think in a situation like that, we would advise you on how to live with the beaver.
I'll tell Sullivan Springs.
Uh, yeah. I mean, how do you, how do you, yeah, so.
Anybody else? Thanks, Brenda. Appreciate it.
You got it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Should we turn this off now?
Thank you. Yep, great. That moves us to item number seven on the agenda, which is a public hearing for resolution number 25-026, adopting an updated system development charge methodology for the wastewater and transportation systems in the city of Stateon. Julia?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have, um, on the, the line virtually, Zek Hazel and John Gilarducci with FCS Group to answer any questions. And I'm just going to read some notes I have. Uh, system development char, system development charges are one-time fees assessed on new development to help fund infrastructure improvements needed to support community growth. Um, our existing transportation and wastewater SDC methodologies have not been updated since 2014, and don't reflect the current capital improvement needs, construction costs, and updated growth projections. We engaged FCS Group to prepare an updated SDC methodology report for both the transportation and wastewater. Council had a joint work session with the City of Sublimity on April 17th on the wastewater SDC, and a work session on transportation on May 19th. The draft methodology reports were, uh, made publicly available, and a 90-day notice of public hearing was issued in compliance with the Oregon revised statutes. I also emailed developers who've been talking to the city over the past several years, um, to make sure they were aware that we, we were discussing this. Um, we also have information on our website, and notice at the public works and planning counter. Um, we're asking council to adopt the updated methodology, and that's in exhibit A and B of your resolution. And then, the next agenda item, um, would be the resolution 2527, which, um, updates the fee schedule to reflect those, um, as well. That's, it provides a little bit more detail and clarity, um, in the fee schedule. We are recommending the rates be set at the maximum defensible rates, and we've discussed that in our work sessions as well, um, to ensure new development pays the full cost of the impacts of the system. Um, as I mentioned, we did send notice out, and we have not received any written comments as of this meeting, and, um, that's, I'm happy to answer any questions, or turn them over to John or Zek.
Okay, before we do that, I'm going to have to read the script, because we didn't do that to start with. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input on adopting an updated system development charge methodology for the wastewater and transportation systems in the city of Stateon. I will now open the public hearing. Did city staff receive any written testimony for this hearing?
No, we did not.
Thank you. Did city staff receive any request to testify virtually for this hearing?
No.
Thank you. Is there anyone in this audience this evening who would like to provide testimony for this hearing? I don't hear anybody. With that, we'll close the hearing, and, um, move on. So let's go to council deliberation.
Mr. Mayor? We had a work session, well, two work sessions, like, uh, Julia said, talking about these issues, and, um, it was brought up that they have to be paid somehow, so either it's going to be paid with SDC charges, that new growth will pay for new growth, or it will be, um, put on our ratepayers, because we will have to increase the rates. And so, for that reason, I'm going to be a yes on, um, updating these fees. We haven't done it for 10 years, and, um, I agree with the statement that growth needs to pay for growth.
Okay, thank you. Counsel? Counsel Sims?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 25026 as presented.
Seconded.
Okay. There's a motion to adopt, and a second to adopt resolution number 25026, adopting an updated system development charge methodology for the wastewater and transportation systems in the city of Stateon as submitted. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Sims?
Yeah, we, we talked about this in several work sessions, but I really don't want to see the burden for upgrades to our systems put on the current taxpayers, so that's one of the reasons we, uh, we're putting the, uh, SDCs at their max, so new, new construction's going to, you know, bear that burden rather, current taxpayers. So, that was one of the methodologies why we did this.
Okay. Anybody else? With that, I'm going to ask Melanie to call the council, please.
Counsel Orte? Yes. Uh, Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Counsel Kerry?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. That moves us to the next item on the agenda, which is number eight, general business on the resolution number 25027, adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2025-26 fee schedule to update system development charges to reflect inflationary adjustments and revised SDC methodologies for wastewater and transportation. Julia?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is, as I mentioned, um, the next, um, item is establishing the fee schedule for most system develop, or all system development charges. Um, we generally, in, um, June-ish, um, will ask council to update the system development charges in, for inflation in accordance with the construction code index. Um, we didn't do that this year, because we knew we were going to be coming to council with the, um, proposed SDC, um, methodology updates, and so we thought we would just do it all at one time. So that's what's in front of you, is, um, for the parks, water, and, um, storm, sorry, I'm like, what's the other one? Um, it's just increasing per the, um, construction code index, and then for the wastewater and transportation, it's reflecting the new SDC. Um, in your packet, you've got a resolution, and, um, on pages 36 and 37, actually 36 through 40, or 39, is what you will actually see in the fee schedule, so it's much more detailed. And then for your reference, um, showing you what is being taken out of the fee schedule, you'll notice it's a little bit formatted differently. I think, um, last fee schedule, we tried to make it really, um, clear for the residential user, but it actually, when we're looking at it, um, it wasn't as informative for the non-residential user as it really needed to be. So, um, what you have, what we'll be adopting, is more detail, but more clarity at the same time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, before we do that, there's another opportunity for public comment for resolution number 25027. Anybody? Okay. Council discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Orte?
I make a motion to approve resolution number 25-027 as presented.
Seconded.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number 25-027, adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2526 fee schedule to update system development charges to reflect inflationary adjustments and revise SDC methodologies for wastewater and transportation. Is there any further discussion? Melanie, can you pull the council on this one, please?
Counsel Orte?
Yes.
Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Counsel Kerry?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. That moves us on to letter B under general business. Resolution number 25-028, calling for a measure election to submit to the electors of the city of Stateon to question the five-year local option tax, levying a tax rate of $1.10 per thousand assessed value, beginning fiscal year 2627, to be placed on the November 4th, 2025 election ballot, for partial operation support of the city's parks and pools. Julia?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Um, as mentioned in your staff report, you have had a number of work sessions on this subject, um, February 3rd, 11th, April 21st, and July 21st, so there's been lots of discussion on what this might look like. Um, what is in front of you is a resolution adopting the ballot title, and that was drafted by Ross, who is here this evening, if you have any questions or want any changes. Um, and it also, per council direction on the last levy, um, we have, um, definite information on what the existing tax rate is, and what the proposed tax rate is, both on the, um, ballot title, as well as the explanatory statement. The, um, explanatory statement is, uh, I think it's not included within the resolution, but it was for your reference and information on page 46 of your packet. Uh, just to note, there are word limits on the explanatory sta, well, on both of them, but the explanatory statement, we have 10 words to spare. Um, and I did notice, when I was preparing for the meeting, that we didn't specifically mention Wilderness Park in the explanatory statement, so that might be something that we might want to add, um, or add some direction. And then, I, there is, Brent Stevenson, I believe, is online virtually, um, at, when we had our last work session, we discussed Wilderness Park. That was one of the reasons why we're proposing, um, the increase to $1.10, is that it would allow, um, or the hope is that it would allow opening of Wilderness Park, and council wanted a little bit more certainty of what that might look like before you put it on the ballot. So what I handed out, actually, at the beginning of the meeting, and I, I do have copies if people are interested, and Brent is here, if you have additional questions, is, uh, the detail of the proposed lease terms, um, that essentially is, uh, documenting what the cost would be, and what our responsibility would be, and what their responsibility would be. Um, that's sort of agreed upon, and Brent has taken that, um, or the concept to his board, um, so it, there is buy-in there. Um, we'd have to work through the, the specific details for a specific lease, but we, there, there is agreement on what those terms do look like. Um, so happy to answer any questions, uh, that council might have, and like I said, Brent is here, and Ross is here.
Thanks, Julia. Before we do that, it's another opportunity for public comment. Any public comment on this? Doesn't appear so. Council, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Sims?
I've got a question on Wilderness Park, might be for Brent. The, uh, so there's $75,000 upfront path and tree maintenance? And then addition to that, is there, what, 475 feet of fencing also to construct? Is that on top of that?
I, I envisioned that that was within that amount, but Brent, do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, I, I think, um, one of the, you know, there's a couple components, some fencing and some gates are the hard infrastructure that the district is interested in. Um, and then, we're unsure, really, of the cost to get, there was a, some damage from, uh, the ice storm, some trees and some other issues, safety concerns, and we're not super clear on the cost there. So we, we put a placeholder in, um, understanding that as this moves forward, we'd work together with, you know, volunteers and other, uh, opportunities, um, to try and get that thing cleaned up, but ultimately, um, cost by city.
And we assumed, in our, um, analysis, to get to the, the levy rate that we're recommending, we assumed about $100,000, but... 70 total? Okay. Ross is, or, James is saying 70. I thought it was more than that. Okay.
That's for the fence?
Gate, fence, and cleanup, as necessary.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then we also, um, since Brenda is still here, um, there is a strong hope that there could be some partnership, um, leverage with, with grants to help get that area opened up as well, through, through them and potentially other granting partners and volunteers. Oh. Mayor, just sorry, it sounds like there might be somebody that wants to speak, um, but that's up to you on whether or not you take, um, ask for...
Sure, I'll allow it. We don't get very much public comment at all, but come on back up. Can you come up to the microphone, Brenda, please?
The Wilderness Park is something we've talked about at the district, and we would like, I think it's a perfect candidate for a partner grant. So, uh, you know, we could potentially put in about 35 grand or so onto it. That grant starts in September, though. That opens up in September, so we'd have to get on it pretty quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have been told that Brent also would like to speak again.
Go ahead, Brent.
Yeah, and I've also raised, uh, raised the issue with our, um, watershed council, and they're, they're very interested as well, and, uh, maybe a voluntary work program or something to help clean up.
Okay. Thanks, Brent. Bring council back to discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Orte?
I have a question about the swinging bar gates on both sides of the bridge. So it says to temporary close the park at night. So is the expectation that they're going to, who, they're going to be closed at night, and then opened in the morning, and then who's going to do that?
Um, I think that is, I don't know that it's necessarily a close every night. I think that the district wants the ability to close it, so that it can be closed, um, for maintenance, and if there, there were problems, then I think that would be something that we need to look at, closing it at night. But it's not intended to keep people out, out. It's intended to be a sign that people shouldn't be going in there, so I don't, you know, if it's, I don't know that it's going to keep people out that don't want to look at a sign, but it will, um, keep people out that, when they're wanting to do maintenance or clean, or, or when we're wanting to do those things. Brent, did you have anything to add on that?
It's just the ability to, to let folks know that we're in there, if we have to take our heavy equipment in, um, we'd have the ability to close and make it, make it a safer work site. There's not an expectation that it would be closed every night, at least from district perspective.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any more questions, council? Counsel Sims, looks like you have something?
Well, I definitely think the wilderness, opening of Wilderness Park should be on the, the statement that goes in the pamphlet. If we're, uh, going to levy that amount to build, open the park. Because it wasn't on the statement, was it?
Yeah, it's not on the, um, the ballot title, but we can amend it. Actually, I, um, we, we might have to play with some words a little bit, but, um, we could amend the explanatory statement, um, I think to get that language in there. I proposed something that was exactly 10 words, but it makes SWDC one word, so I'm not sure. So we might have to work with Ross on, on details. But you're actually approving the, um, the ballot title and not the explanatory statement. Um, we just wanted you to see the, the explanatory statements, so you, um, would, would feel comfortable with it, uh, but I, I think we can wiggle that a little bit.
Oh, okay. I guess, I guess I was getting the two confused, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Patty?
Thank you. I, I think I have a question for Brent. I am just looking at this, uh, diagram or this map that we had given to us at the start of the meeting, Brent. I don't know if you have access to that or not. Um, I'm just wondering if the, the fence that's denoted here, it kind of looks like it's in place where there's already a fence, and I'm just wondering, are we, you know, are we just, um, expanding that? Or are we improving the pieces that are already there, the existing fence? Just trying to understand.
Sure. Right now, uh, today, the district has two fenced-in facilities, you know, around the fish screens, the site is completely fenced, and then around Salem Ditch, headgate is... The site is completely fenced, and then around Salem Ditch, head gate is fenced, and the proposal is to put a connecting fence between the two that would prevent public from the tip of that Wilderness Park, if you will. That was, that was the area that we had issues in prior times.
Yeah, I just, the reason I'm asking is because I know that, you know, growing up in this town and having access, that was a big swimming hole back there, and I'm just wondering, is that kind of where we're trying to eliminate the public access to?
Yes.
Got it.
One of the issues with the big swimming hole was that it's creating buds and silt that create a DEQ liability for the two entities.
Thank you for explaining that to me.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Orton.
I have a question about the fence. So this is a, this would be a five-term, five-year term for a lease, and then we're going to put on a fence, and what happens after five years?
So I can answer this. James and I have actually had similar conversations. We've assumed a certain upfront expenditure investment to make this work. Those will be assets that will then be on the property, so we don't take the fence down or take the gate away. It would be something that we're investing in, but it stays with the property. I would assume then that if we have another five-year levy, perhaps we don't have to increase it as much because we won't have that same upfront cost. So it will just be ongoing maintenance and won't be that upfront cost potentially, so it would stay with the property, but it might reduce future expenditures.
Mr. Mayor, I have a follow-up question.
Counselor Orton.
The lease rate, I feel like this is higher than we had talked about. And also, is this in our budget?
It isn't the budget. We had proposed $6,000 a year, and that was the amount that we had budgeted. What was brought back was essentially 6,000-plus inflation. I ran that past James, and he felt comfortable that that was within what we could budget, especially since the increases were in outer years and not this first year.
Thank you.
Hey, Brent, I have a question. What's the total acreage of that piece of land? Do you know?
I'm not completely sure.
Okay.
And we actually are working through a title question related to acreage.
Okay. I'm just curious, when F and D this went through and that proposed fence was in place, that cuts off a good portion of that park. A lot of trails are back there, and I understand your rationale between wanting to do that. I just, I was curious how much of that eliminates access to that park that people have used in the past.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a huge chunk of property that will be cut off, definitely under two acres, and I believe the site is 40 or 50 acres overall.
Okay.
And I guess if I might explain the acreage issue--
Sure, go ahead, Brent.
You have a, you have a, you had a pre-application, and there's a development that's looking at part of the properties along Park Road, and that brought to our attention that the county lot lines are differing from what we thought we owned, and so we're working with that developer to have it surveyed and determined and clarified.
What would council like to do here?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel Patty.
Julia, when we were doing the staff report on this, you said that we needed to amend a part of it. Could you refresh my memory what that was?
You don't need to amend a part of it. I just mentioned that the explanatory statement doesn't include Wilderness Park, and we should, we should, at the staff level, amend it to include that, so I'm just acknowledging that, but that's not part of what you're making a decision on, so you're good.
I just wanted to make sure before I did this.
Thank you.
Cool. Well, I would like to make a motion then. My motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-028 is presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 25-028 as presented. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Orton.
I, I'm still a little stuck on the Wilderness Park lease part. I just feel like it will, maybe I, you could tell me I'm wrong, but I feel like the amount was different, and I understand it's going up for inflation, but I feel like the amount that we talked about was significantly lower for rent. I'm not really, I'm not really happy that it's only five years. Like, I understand that the levy's only five years, but how long was our previous lease? 20 years? I just don't want to put in all this effort and all this work and then potentially have it closed again, and then people upset because they voted yes for the levy, and then it gets closed again.
So the idea of it being five years is really tying it to the levy itself, so if the levy doesn't pass, we don't have parks, we don't have Wilderness Park. So having a, we can't make a 20-year commitment on a lease rate when we don't know if we're going to have a parks levy funded in five years, you know, six years. So it's really to tie that cost with the revenue that we're having. So that's, that's the rationale there.
My question, Julia, is that, I guess it's for Brent. So this still is not, this proposal has not been adopted by the board yet, yeah?
Correct. The general terms have been reviewed and adopted.
And ultimately, this is going to come back to council in a, in a contract form. You just wanted to ensure before you put it on the ballot that there, that we were in alignment. So that, that's, that's why we have these lease terms and wanted to present this, the more detail to you. So we'll have to come back with an actual contract, but we're, I'm confident that, and I think Brent is confident, that we're, we're pretty, we're pretty in agreement, and I, you know, I do hear what you're saying, Counselor Orton. I, I know I had been saying $6,000 a year, so certainly showing the amount, and maybe, you know, there was the thought that it was just $6,000 and not, yeah, I'm not sure where the, where that alignment got.
I guess I have a question, Julia. Outside of the lease amount for each year, have we determined what it's going to cost us operationally to upkeep that portion of the park?
That's why we also were proposing the increase in the FTE, the parks employee FTE, so that's part of what we have budgeted for the biennial and part of what's in here as well. So I can't tell you a specific amount, but our estimate is, with additional staff, an additional half FTE, plus the resources that we have, plus with volunteer work, plus with grants, we think we can have this opened and what the community wants.
Okay. Was there any further discussion? There was a motion, a second, correct? Was there a motion, a second, correct? Any further discussion? Melanie, please pull the council again.
Counselor Orton?
No.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
No.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
So that means it does not pass, and we will not be placing this on the ballot for November. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a tie. The one thing you get to do. Sorry.
Before I cast my vote, a resolution also has to be unanimous, right, to come back later? I thought it did.
Uh, ordinance. So we will not be putting this on the ballot for November. Is there any direction to have further, have this come back at a later date? The latest for November would be August 11th, so it would be another election. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Orton.
I feel like there's still too much uncertainty with Wilderness Park, and I don't, I don't want to say we're going to put this on the ballot and then tie it to Wilderness Park, and then our hands are tied when negotiating the rest of these details with the Water Control District.
I don't disagree, Counselor Orton. I think my rationale behind this right now is it's too much shoved down at one time. There's too many things rolled into this measure, asking the voters for an increase of 110% on this levy, with no assurances that anything's going to change other than operational. And now we're adding the question mark of the Wilderness Park to it. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
Yeah, I think, back to the opposition to this motion, I would say, maybe put forward some sort of amendment you'd like to do, because it kind of sounds like if we don't get this by August 11th, this doesn't get on the ballot.
Julia, the levy for this expires next July, correct? '26?
Yes, so we, what we anticipated is that we would have the November ballot and the May ballot as opportunities to vote for this.
Right. So there's still an opportunity in May?
Yes, but if it does not pass in May--
Then we have been right. This is a hard one, and I admit it, and I really feel that the voters need to be more informed about what they're voting for here.
Mr. Mayor, that's exactly what I would want, would like to address also, just making it very clear and decisive for them, or clear and, what's the word I'm looking for? Very detailed? Because if you're going to go into this not knowing that--
So we could amend the, and I'm doing this on the fly, so I don't know that we could do this today or right this moment, but we could amend the proposal to exclude Wilderness Park, but then that excludes Wilderness Park. I don't know that we're going to be able to give you the detail, that level of detail and assurance that it sounds like you're looking for by the time the August 11th, by the time the November ballot stuff is due.
Well, we do have the option to have a special meeting, correct?
Right. I don't know that we're going to be able to get the level of detail and assurance that you want in the next, how many days? I guess this week, essentially. I mean, that's, you know, we can sure try, but I, I'm, I don't know that we're going to get both entities to get a contract written and agreed to within that timeframe.
Mr. Mayor, if I may--
Go ahead, Counsel Patty.
Thank you. I was wondering, you know, it kind of sounds like the councilors and the mayor's concern here is around the voters' education on this measure and what it would do, and so I'm just wondering, you know, is anybody amenable to, you know, conversations at this dais at this time to ensure that that education does take place and kind of what that would look like, and I'm just wondering if that would alleviate some of the concern there.
Well, I guess for me, does anyone realize what percentage increase this is? I mean, that's why I brought it up. It's 110%, just for the parks levy itself. Let's not include Wilderness Park for a minute. And what does that do for us? It leaves us to operational, current operational levels. Doesn't give the citizens anything else than current operational level. We just talked about that when we did the library levy. Now we're asking this again. At some point, the citizens in this city, I think they're pretty strapped as it is with outside influences and the demands they have on their paychecks. I really want them to understand what we're asking of them, and I want there to be value in what they're saying yes to. And if that's just to keep the parks open in its current form, or the pool, it's a hard pill to swallow for me. It seems like this, adding the Wilderness Park is like dangling on a carrot.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Carey.
Counsel Patty, I appreciate your question. I think that if we allow them to make that choice on the levy, that's up to them, if it's an increase for them, they know that they can do it or not. So I think I would be willing to reverse my vote and go with the faith that I think the people can make a choice on their own finances.
Gotcha, thank you.
So you want to reconsider? Is that what you're asking? Can I do that, Ross?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know how that works when we've had a motion made and passed.
Yeah, there can be a motion for reconsider.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion for reconsideration. That's what council desires to do.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would motion that we reconsider my motion.
Okay.
Also, how would the partnership with the Marion County Soil and Water work into this financially for us if we were accepted?
So I would say it would be peripheral. I mean, that's not part of what we're including in the ballot discussions--
Right.
--but that is what we are planning on to make sure that we're able to accommodate what needs to be accommodated within the budget that, that we've assumed. So, and I'll just note that we don't have a second for the motion for reconsideration, and just a point of, I guess, question for Ross, since he's here. They're voting on to reconsider it, not actual voting on the resolution, correct? Okay, thanks.
I will second that. Okay. With that, oh, sorry.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, for reconsideration of the vote that we just took, correct? Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I guess there's not really any discussion. If we could just continue deliberating and discussing what this would look like as far as the financial relationship to get Counselor Carey's question answered there, I think that would be good.
All right, I'm getting a little bit confused here.
So you want to vote on whether or not they're reconsidering?
Correct. So any further discussion from that? So all those in favor, reconsiderate. Well, let's do this again. Can you pull the council, please, Melanie, on reconsideration?
Counsel Orton?
Yes.
Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Counsel Carey?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries 3 to 1.
Okay, now, second half again. What would council like to do for reconsideration of Resolution Number 25-028?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-028 as presented.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 25-028 as presented. Any further discussion? Melanie, can you pull the council again, please?
Counsel Orton?
No.
Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Counsel Carey?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries 3 to 1.
Thank you. Next discussion is a discussion of the transient lodging tax. And I do have one public comment on that one. But Julia, let's go with you.
The Julia night. So this is coming to council in part because the mayor asked for us to have more information about this and where it comes from. And then also, James pointed out that there's stuff in the code that tells us that we're supposed to come and talk to you on a regular basis about this. So can you pull up the presentation? I do have a copy of the presentation in front of you. And then for anybody that is interested, we also have a few extra copies as well. And I'll put that at the end of the table so Melanie can hand that out if anybody wants it. Okay, thank you. So the transient occupancy tax was adopted via ordinance, if you can go to the history, thank you, was adopted via ordinance 803 in 1999. It includes a whereas clause to provide funds for urban beautification improvements to or operation of major tourist attractions or cultural activities or facilities, transit, business development assistance or activities which promote the use of state and for conventions, conferences, seminars, and general tourism. The tax is 7% of the rent charged. The operator may withhold 5% of that amount for administration per the ordinance. In 2003, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 2267 that established a 1% statewide transient lodging tax, or TLT, same as our TOT. Among other things, it preempted local control over the TLTs restricting how it's used except for things that were grandfathered in. So ours are grandfathered in, essentially. If we were to raise our tax rate, then those would be restricted. If you want to go to the next slide. Some exemptions on who has to pay the transient occupancy tax. If the occupant pays rent on a monthly basis, if their rent is less than $2 a day, rental of a private home, vacation cabin, or like facility from owner who rents the facility incidental to the owner's use, and if it's the occupant of a paid hospital room, rehabilitation center, et cetera. Next slide. So per the code, we have some reporting requirements. All money collected under this ordinance must be deposited into the transient occupancy account. And I must report annually to the city council. The date is June 30th of each year, and that's part of what James pointed out that we had not been doing in recent past. And James, I might make you come up here if there's questions about this. But so we had some, we're proposing some accounting changes for clarity. The previous accounting practice was that it went into a general fund miscellaneous revenue code, and it was mixed, which made tracking difficult. As of February of 2025, finance has instituted a new practice, or will institute a new practice, creating a dedicated account so that we can track that better. In fiscal year '25, we collected just under $9,000, and we've budgeted about that amount for the biennial budget. There's 10 properties that are being tracked with one not currently operating. Just key insights, updates. We're seeing more Airbnb-type properties that are active. It is self-reported revenue submission, so we rely on trust for compliance. We had two properties that had fallen behind in their payments, but they're both caught up and on schedule. And then going forward, accounts receivable, our specialist will provide annual summaries, our finance will be providing annual summaries. We continue to monitor new and existing rental properties and hope to continue or to be clearer in the revenue tracking. So that's really the gist of what we were going to share, but happy to answer questions or if there's additional follow-up, and it does sound like there's somebody that wanted to speak on this.
Yep, thanks, Julia. I'm going to read the statement real quick. Public comment, opening statement. The council will now receive public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the council. The council's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If there is a follow-up necessary, we will direct city staff to do so. Remember that we all model the way for our community, and we ask that everyone share their thoughts respectfully. Those who have completed a request for recognition form will be called one at a time to step forward and state their name and city of residence. Please note that speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. And with that, Carol Seabans.
My name is Carol Seabans, and I live in the city of State. Thank you for taking the time to review this issue. I know that being on the city council doesn't get you a lot of thanks, and I appreciate you volunteering your time. I own a local Airbnb, and I also manage an Airbnb for my parents. These Airbnbs, as well as others in town, provide a much-needed service to the community. Many of the stays we host are for family members visiting their relatives and friends in the area. Some are coming to see Silver Falls. After the 2020 fires, we hosted flagging crews and a variety of other people servicing up the canyon. Our reviews consistently say how guests appreciate having the clean, quality, comfortable accommodations. These visitors are adding to the local economy. I provide a list of local shopping and restaurants for them to visit. I know they shop here because they almost always leave or forget something in our refrigerators. The purpose of fees is typically to offset costs to the community. And a hotel, I know, provides a lot of traffic, but our Airbnb has less traffic than when our kids are home. Other home businesses in the community provide traffic, have lots of traffic, and they're not being taxed on this. In 2022, my parents paid $373 in tax. I paid $80 in taxes. In 2023, my parents paid 581, and I paid about 83. In 2024, my parents paid 732, and I paid 95. In 2025 so far, my parents have paid 139 in taxes. My unit does not pay as much because when I saw the taxes, I started doing longer-term rentals. If you do 28 days or over, then you don't have that tax. I thought the percentage was excessive, and so that was one of the reasons I moved to that. This is a tax on a few people that impacts them significantly, but it has a pretty small impact on the city's budget. If you look at 2023, the city took in $2,445. My parents paid 23% of that. I have not seen a benefit from the amount of taxes that they have paid. If you do keep this tax, I think the fees should go where they will actually be used to provide a benefit to those who are paying the taxes. I do believe the city should reduce or eliminate this tax as it is a disincentive for locals, for guests to come and stay locally, guests that support our local economy. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody have any questions for Carol? Okay, thank you. All right. Just for council's awareness, and Julia's right, I did ask her to bring this up because I had received questions very much similar to what Carol just articulated, and that was, where does the money go to? And when I had the discussion with James, he told me it went to the general fund. And so I haven't seen it come out of there. Don't know how it benefits the people paying the tax. And that's how it came to be on the top, and because we never really talked about it as we're required to do by code. So that's how it got ended up on the agenda tonight. That's my take on it. Council, have any discussion, questions for Julia?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Orton?
Can you just expand a little bit more about the feedback that you're getting?
Yeah, basically, the bottom line was, well, where are the taxes that I pay for this transient occupancy tax? Where does it, how does it benefit the business or the community in general? And that's why I asked the question from James, where does it go? Just goes back to the general fund. And so I didn't know from that point, we're collecting it, but how's it filter out back from that certain point to benefit the people that are operating these facilities? And it wasn't, it was a couple of people have asked me that about, that pay that tax.
And as I mentioned, we definitely will do a better job going forward in tracking that and reporting that. In the ordinance itself, it talks about the types of things. And so as we're budgeting, you know, we can call that out. It's a pretty, honestly, a pretty robust list of things that can be funded, which are greater than what's in the state restrictions. And I would just caution if there is discussion of reducing or eliminating that that's going forward too. So if we were to get a hotel or something in the future where we want to be charging this tax, we would be limited in what we could, what we could charge and what we could use that for if we were to reinstate it.
I have a question, and I probably know the answer, but does the Jones Hotel residents pay that tax?
I, I'm going to guess no because I think they're long-term. But I'm looking to James to see if he knows off the top of his head, and he's shaking his head.
And that's because of the length of, they're considered rentals like an apartment?
It's considered housing.
Yeah, it's exempt, and same with Ms. Seabans. If it's greater than 21 days, it's exempt from the tax.
And is this?
28.
Is this reporting self on your honor system? I mean, there's no way for us to know how long a person's staying in the residence, right?
We could certainly endeavor to see if we can look a little bit more closely. But I think that as of now, really, we look at, we look at sites to see who's advertising and, you know, look at resources that we have to find rentals because there is no hotel per se in town.
Yeah. I guess for me, the biggest thing was when someone asked me that question, and I look at them dumped on it like, because I don't know where the money goes. I don't know how it improves their situation. I don't know where it's used in the community. That in turn helps them get more business. So that's my, that's my take. But it sounds like you're making hopefully some changes towards that?
So that you will be able to answer that better in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Orton?
We do, and we have a Chamber of Commerce membership. We have a Chamber of Commerce membership, and we were sponsors of Summerfest.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know the relevance of that.
I'm just saying we pay for those.
Oh, gotcha.
Tourism and commerce things. It might not directly affect them.
Mr. Mayor? On top of the tax, they're considered businesses, and they have to pay a business license as well on top of it? How's that work?
We don't have a business license.
So the people who own an Airbnb, they don't have to have, okay, okay.
Well, it doesn't sound like there's much action on this, so thanks for the information. I appreciate the public comment, and we'll see if council decides to do anything in the future, I guess. All right. That moves us on to the next thing on the agenda, which is Public Works projects and the Detroit Deep Drawdown update.
And I know you're going to be really sad that you're not having me present another agenda item, but Barry is going to come and provide information to you.
All right.
Barry Buchanan, interim Public Works Director. Julia says she's going to get away with not talking to you, but in actual fact, that's not true. I have given you, or handed out before the meeting today, two documents. One that has a title, "Public Works Update," and the other is the Detroit Dam Drawdown. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on either document. I'm really going to give a summary here. If you go to the first page of the Public Works update, I've really, we're trying to illustrate what we're aiming to do within Public Works as it stands today. The existing structure gives us basically a two-tier operative operation with an administration supporting the operation of engineering ops out in the field and wastewater water treatment systems. We want to develop that a little bit more, and Alyssa's disappeared, but it's as good as gold.
Yeah, do you need her?
No, 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 no. No, I just hope I'm not stealing her thunder in this particular case. We have received CVs for people interested in filling the jobs of asset manager and also engineer, chair city engineer. We received three proposals for the asset manager, one from internal and two external, and one for the engineering position. We're currently reviewing those and looking at, planning interviews over the next coming weeks. Hopefully, we'll, from that selection, we'll actually be able to fulfill a couple of positions and move some work forward. As you'll see on the aspirational chart, I've also added one additional position that we haven't discussed before, which is putting in place a maintenance manager. That is not intended to happen in the next year, but potentially, once we get the asset management system up and working, we'll move to an actual, moving someone from inside our current organization to fulfill a maintenance position that will allow the work to be done on a more regular basis associated with a structured civil mechanical type approach to the work as opposed to having it inside the functions as it stands today. The next page illustrates how we would want to break down work in the future. So we'll identify it as operation and maintenance work. We'll look at rebuild work. We'll look at new work, and we'll look specifically at rest disposal and removal. One of the things that we don't do a good thing and handle well at the moment is removing what we don't use or has become old or obsolete. And that becomes a problem in both health and safety functions within the organization out in operations, and it also becomes a problem in identifying what we actually have, know we have, and what sort of conditions are in. So we want to move to more proactive type approach of work. Currently, we are specifically quite heavily reactive to our failures. With the asset management position in place, we'll formulate an asset register associated with the assets in each of the different departments, and we'll start conditionally assessing and assessing how we're going to move forward with the work in the future. Next page goes a, I'm not going to go through the details on the next page, but suffice it to say that as it stands right now, preliminary evaluation that we've done, we're looking at somewhere around about 30, 30 to 40% of our assets are in poor to failing condition. We don't have a good handle on this, and this is reinforced in what I just said a minute ago, that we need to establish an asset register so we understand what we have and what condition that is. Roughly, if I talk in round numbers, we have about $1 billion worth of assets as it stands right now, and about $300 million of those are in actual poor condition. So that's quite significant. Following page is what you really want to talk about today. And then we'll start talking about the actual projects that we have in place and we're working through as, as work is progressing in the, in Public Works today associated with Capitol Works projects. Shaft Road, we received bids for Shaft Road last week. We opened them on Tuesday last week. We received 13 bids, yes, 13 bids, which is quite significant over what we've been receiving in the past. The engineer's estimate for that project was about $900,000, and we got bids that ranged from roughly $750 to $1.3 million. And we currently have that out in notification for acceptance, and the next, next council will be bringing the proposal along for you guys to sign off. Oh, excuse me. Phase three IDA sewer is currently in, how do I describe it? We are relooking at the design and location of where the pipeline will actually go in the light of new information associated with a hydraulic study that is being completed and, completed as we talk. It is also being reviewed in terms from the engineering design point of view on which road it should go down, what it's going to handle, and how much it's going to take into consideration for future development work. Mill Creek Park is basically on hold as it stands. The ASR, we are currently on hold. we are currently on hold, we're not on hold, I shouldn't say that. We are, there is no progress on the ASR physically, physical well or pumping stations, but as I just said, the pipeline going towards that, we're looking at letting that project in the very near future. At a really good price, and I stress again, we got 13 bids. Usually, we get two or three. For the next, Jitters Way, it's basically on hold, West Town Overlay. The survey work is being completed and the design being finalized. Street repair work, you'll be pleased to know that we have actually got, the contractor Canyon Contractors are looking at the work specifically, and we will be moving forward with those projects for the Three Streets, Fifth, Sixth, and, and Water Street, and High Street. By the end of this year, we will have repair work undertaken on those streets. Paul, I'm gonna jump forward at this stage and talk briefly about the roundabout, and Julia, you might want to add to this, but we have had noticed that our potential grant monies of that are drastically reduced from what we originally anticipated to have. But unfortunately, as you can see on the page here, the price is significantly more than we originally anticipated as well. So we are in discussions with the design team, Kittleson, to figure out how and what we might do and how we might move forward. When I say that the monies have drastically reduced, we're less than a million dollars in, in grant money now. We were originally, I believe it was four million?
Yes.
Four million.
And just to be clear, nothing is actually set anyways, but yes, the, what's appeared to, appears to be moving forward is a reduction of, from four million to about one million.
And the price has doubled. So we really have a problem with this, this project. And a similar problem is also occurring at the wastewater treatment plant, where we were looking at replacing, oh, sorry, adding an SBR to the treatment process. That money has reduced, I believe, correct me here, from 3.5 million down to just over 1 million in potential grant possibility. The project still sits at roughly 3.5, but we haven't updated the, the project number as it stands in recent time. So that's also a problematic project. Any questions on that before I go to the dam discussion?
Yeah, Barry, I have a question. I didn't see it on the list, but what about Fifth and Sixth Street?
Oh, that was the one that I was talking about. That, that we were working with Canyon as it stands right now, and that work.
That's included in that?
And that street repair work, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I, the recollection I had, or the discussion we had, was the gravel buildup in the middle, and so that's included in there.
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah. And in fact, there was three design proposals done for each one of the streets, and that's currently being reviewed and priced by Canyon as it stands today.
And before you go to the, the dam discussion, there was a lot of information, and you went through that really fast. We're going to be doing this on a regular basis, so the idea is that you guys are getting updates periodically so that you're, they're more familiar, so that as he runs down the list of things, you're, you're more familiar with these, and we can certainly pause or have additional conversations if you want more details on anything specific. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I did tell him to go quickly, so I think that might be why he was going through that so quickly.
No, I was told that I talked too much, so I was told that I wasn't allowed to use too many words.
Talking faster doesn't make up, but no, I'm just kidding.
Oh, good. Okay, so.
Wait, what is that? SWMP? I missed that. What is that?
Oh, well.
The Stormwater Master Plan?
Oh, the Stormwater Master Plan, yeah. Sorry, I didn't even talk about that. The Stormwater Master Plan is ongoing. It'll be at least probably another year before it's actually truly finalized. It has been done by, it has currently been done by Keller, and the modeling work is underway right now. It's likely to be completed within the next couple of months, and we're looking at at least two reviews to get it to a final stage by January of next year. But they've also already told us that there is, there are new regulations and rules coming out that we should revise and review the plan, even though we're finalizing it early next year, but give an update by the middle of next year. Confused? I am.
No. I'm just looking at how much it costs.
Unfortunately, master plans are no, no longer a cheap item to do, and that is one of the things that I'm really looking at, or we are really looking at, as far as the asset manager taking a lead role in and bringing a lot of that work back in-house, and that we will in actual fact establish our own planning system inside the organization, as opposed to going outside to consultants. Now, I'm sure the consultants listening are not happy, but that is one of the things that we're seriously looking at doing by employing an asset management plan, infrastructure planner. You're correct. Asset, master plans, any sort of outside plan consulting, they're expensive.
And I don't think, I mean, Stormwater Master Plans are exceptionally expensive. I don't think like transportation system plans or park master plans are quite as much because you don't have that technical modeling that goes on. They're still expensive, but I think this is high even for master plans because of the, the type of master plan.
That is, yeah, okay. I'll just say yes.
Thank you.
I'll just say yes.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question to them? Does it make it any more difficult because of our, like, the agreement that we have with the Santiam Water District and our, like, standards that we have?
No. Our agreements with Santiam Water Control District are fair and reasonable in to the extent that they have a business to run, we have a business to run, and we're trying to work together to in actual fact come up with common ground so that we can in actual fact integrate and work together so that both things work. Yes, it is fair that we negotiate and we look at modifying or improving those standards, in some places to their advantage, some times to our advantage. But I believe that when both sides come together and we can actually talk together about it, we actually come up with a better solution at the end of the day. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I don't think there is added complication because we have to interact with the Santiam Water Control District, specifically on the Stormwater Master Plan. All districts, it doesn't matter where, where they are, disposing of a stormwater is problematic because we are discharging to natural waterways. So, okay. Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
Good.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so Julia, do you want to lean off as far as the dam, dam stuff is concerned, and then I'll chime in with the technical piece to close it off?
I'll try. So we had already planned on Barry giving a Public Works update, like I mentioned. We're gonna do this regularly. And then last week, Salem did their declaration of emergency. We got some additional information from the City of Salem. We had the interview from, from Coin, that Counselor Sims did a wonderful job. So it's, there's more discussion, there's more conversation happening in, at the community level, and so I asked Barry to also provide an update on where we're at, what we've learned, and kind of what our, yeah, where we're at, what we've learned. And we also did have a meeting this past week with our attorney and our lobbyist with CFM, just to discuss and strategize and make sure that we're still going forward on the same path, or the, the right path. So we're, we're working that angle too. So we're continuing to work the education, political, legal angle to make sure that we're positioning ourselves as best we can, given that we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. But Barry is going to share sort of where we're at from a technical standpoint, from what, and what the City of Salem has learned a little bit more on. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so in the documents that I sent out, there is basically the, there's the color picture about the water treatment plants and the water systems, and there is a table in the other one, basically setting out the items that we're addressing. First, I'm gonna go through, through this one and discuss the diagram, and then we'll quickly go to the table. So, oh, excuse me, sorry. The diagram is to illustrate our water treatment plant against the City of, City of Salem's water treatment plant, to emphasize the differences that we in actual fact have between the city, city and ourselves. The city, the City of Salem has engaged and been engaged with consult, their consulting engineers on what the ramifications are for their slow sand filters and their, their operation. The news that has come back, and we had a meeting with the City of Salem this morning, it is not good, and it confirms directly what we had discussed with you guys, with people before, that our filters are not suited to handle or accept or receive highly turbid water, and the potential operational issues are significant, and the word that Counselor Sims used was catastrophic, and that was being kind. Given the information that we, that we have heard this morning, catastrophic is, is truly a kind word. So in reality, we, we are in a position that we have to do something, and everybody else has to do nothing. And I, I'm not using the right words. Julia had the right words this morning when we said that stopping the job or not doing, not doing the drawdown is the best solution for us all. And if we can do that through legal or political maneuvers, we will all be happy. Given that that is unlikely to happen, we are going to have to do something as far as our water treatment plant is concerned. Quickly, I'm gonna run through the differences between our system and the City of Salem, illustrating why the City of Salem is in actual fact slightly better off than we are. If you look at the diagram, the first, the orange box is basically along our line, you'll see that we run directly to primary, primary treatment and its slow sand filtration. If you look at the City of Salem line, they actually have a roughing filter capability before their slow sand filters. That is significant. That is significant in that they will run their slow sand filters to take out the dirt for, take out a, a large amount of the dirt for a start-off, but they're sacrificing those filters and potentially will get a very limited number of runs out of those filters before they'd have to rebuild them, to the extent that they are concerned that they wouldn't be able to run at all after a very short period. And hence, what they're looking at, as you can see in the green box at the bottom, the future wells are what they're looking at adding on Garan Island. So they're looking at drilling. They've already got the contracts out now, given the financial situation that came from the council meeting last Monday. They will be in actual fact on the island drilling exploratory wells and functional, operational wells to add more water to their system. Their winter drawdown, oh, that, sorry, their winter demand is around about 25 million gallons a day, and their base flow requirement is about 15 to 20 million gallons a day. Ours is 1.5 million gallons a day, so we're quite a bit smaller, but that does not diminish our anxiety for our community. It's just a number difference. But the significant difference as far as the treatment is concerned is that we, we don't have roughing filter capability. We don't have recycle capability. Moving to the left, little picture here, there is a pump in between here, so they can recycle back to their, back to their filters. We have no pumping capability as it stands right now to recycle or utilize any of our other filters as a sacrificial filter. That's a significant difference for us in our capability of producing water. Leading on from that, we have our ASR, the pink or the maroon color, little squiggle up on the back corner here, that's a future activity, not an immediate activity. The City of Salem has a permanent ASR system that's operational today. Our entertie to the City of Salem, we were told categorically today, and I'm looking at, Julia, to confirm or otherwise that I'm using the right word here, that basically the City of Salem is saying, we need the water that we've got ourselves, and don't count on us being able to provide water to you. Is that a fair statement, Julia?
I think that, they did say that, and it was categorical. I mean, it was very, it was very stern. I think their fear is, we're not sure that we're gonna have enough water for what we need, and it's all based on everything going beautifully, and so they, I don't believe, would be willing to, to plan on giving us water because they can't assure that their water will be available to them all the time anyways, because things go wrong. And so even though they, they've got a system that I think they'll have water if everything goes beautifully, I don't think they're in a position right now where they would be willing to provide us additional water.
Okay, so we're basically, in summing that up, we're basically on our own to solve our problem. And, and that's very unfortunate in, in reality. But you can see that on this diagram, I've drawn the entertie that exists. We currently have an entertie with the city. We can take water and utilize. They're quite happy to sell us water today, and they made that joke as well. So, so the things that we're looking at are that we could augment the water again, utilizing additional wells, rainy wells or similar wells in the, in the gravel streams on, on the island, on our island. What is it called? What, what, the park?
Riverfront Park.
River, thank you. Riverfront Park. Thank you. We could put additional wells on Riverfront Park, or we could extend or enhance our ASR. Neither of those, we have any technical background or technical information to say that that would be operationally sound. Pretreatment, we are discussing with three different vendors at the moment on what pretreatment possibilities could work. The sedimentation, as you will see on this list, is either DAF or sedimentation processes, but as the City of Salem indicated today, they don't believe that they are really sound options for the system. But we are working with vendors directly to in actual fact come up with an answer on whether it's positive or not. And they're purchasing water, as we said, that has been discounted basically from what the city told us this morning. So any questions on this diagram, or anything around, you know, the physical aspects of augmentation, pretreatment, or purchase of, of water? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Ork, go ahead.
The elephant in the room is how are we gonna pay for this?
That's an elephant that exists that we can't get out of the room.
Yes.
That's the challenge, and we've been asked by some of you and some in the public, why aren't we declaring an emergency like Salem did? And they declared an emergency because it allowed them to access money that they had within their, their budget, unappropriated, and move stuff around and use expedited procurement methods. We don't have that, so we don't, there's no benefit to us to declare an emergency at this point in time. We did discuss that with our attorney and our lobbyist. It could be that at some point in time, we decide that it, that it is appropriate and makes sense, but right now, it really wouldn't benefit us, and it might make us look reactionary and silly. So that's, that's kind of where, you know, Barry is actively trying to explore options and costs. And one thing I've said and continue to say, and hope you guys continue to say, is that this is not our, should not be our burden. So we will be talking at the, at the federal level. Our lobbyist is really focusing on the core and then potentially the administration to, to share that message of the, here's what we need, and here's what the impact will be, which will be catastrophic if we don't have things in place. So what we need is the core to not do a drawdown until we have mitigations in place, and we need money to get those mitigations in place. I mean, that's, that's where we're at, at this point in time, short of us taking out loans and raising rates, which I don't think is what we want to do and isn't what I would propose be on the table at this point in time. I don't think we have an answer of how we're gonna get the elephant out of the room.
I'll add to that. The City of Salem have declared an emergency, but they clearly said to us that the exercise that they're doing right now is an investigation exercise. They are not wholly sold on their implemented solution. They are not wholly sold on their implemented solution as it stands right now. They believe it's the best answer they can move forward with right now, but it's not necessarily going to totally satisfy their demand or their requirement. Heck's their inability to give us the benefit of being able to join with them. So, you know, even though they've declared the emergency and have the money in their pocket and are moving forward, they are still very nervous about the whole thing at the end of the day. This table here basically is broken into four categories: avoidance, minimization, mitigation, and some alternatives, alternative development of sources. I'm not going to read the table, but you guys can go through and basically see that avoidance is going to give us a low, low return. Minimization is a low to moderate return as well. Mitigation options are extremely high cost and complicated, may give us some benefit. The alternative of using alternative sources such as the city of Salem have basically been discounted as I've had discussions today. We could go to groundwater investigation, just as the city of Salem is, and that is something that we will discuss and as we move forward. Time is against us. Money is against us and we are moving forward as fast as we can to find a solution. Any questions?
Julia, I have a question. Can you clarify what you meant by reactionary? Because I don't think we're reactionary to anything. I think we're trying to be proactive to this and I don't, I just want to get clarification on what you meant by that.
Yeah, I guess I meant that I don't want us to simply declare an emergency because Salem declared an emergency. I want us to declare an emergency because we, it will benefit us to declare an emergency. And we don't, because there is no, there's no reason at this point to declare an emergency that's going to get us further from a financial standpoint, and like I said, potentially. So here's, I'll just say this. So, in talking with our lobbyist, it could be better, a message that, "We don't even have the money to declare an emergency. There's no benefit to declare an emergency." So that, that helps in the messaging with those that are in, that are able to make decisions that, "Boy, we would, but what's the benefit of declaring an emergency?" So we're trying to be very thoughtful and strategic with what we're doing so that we can help get us the most, the best message that's going to get us further, going to get us either that avoidance, a delay, which is also avoidance, and then hopefully money.
I mean...
I believe we are being proactive, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's why I asked for clarification. I mean, you're using words that are just, you know, there's no coming back from, cataclysmic is the word I would use.
Yeah.
And there's no coming back from that. So what do we do? How do we get attention, this little old state, versus all the attention going to Salem right now? What is the congressional delegation? Do I need to do something? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm frustrated here, but...
No, no, that's okay and I...
Everybody in this community is looking to us and looking to everybody to try to help them resolve this before we even hit that spot.
Right. And I'm trying to decide what I want to say. The advice has been, I mean, yes, we will continue to talk with our congressional delegation, but we might have more success in working with the administration. And so that's what we're sort of working on, is working at the administration level rather than the congressional level. And there might very well be things that, that community members can do. I just don't have an answer at this point in time. I would say give us a week or two. Our lobbyist is actively working with the core on some things. They're also representing other entities within the canyon that are affected similarly. And so, we very well may have some like, "Hey, call this person or call this department." It's possible, you know, there's been some discussions of, "Maybe we send a delegation to DC." There are a lot of interested parties, you know, not just cities, but you've got the Water Control District is very concerned. Mary, I mean, the Soil and Water Conservation District is very concerned. You've got Detroit Lake and the Detroit Lake Foundation is very concerned. You've got a lot of entities on various levels that are concerned. One of the things that has also been discussed is the, while there is a lot of concerns, the water quality and drinking water quality is probably the most, that's going to get the most argument. So again, we're trying to really articulate and fully understand what that is. Salem's information that they had confirmation on, I think will help a lot in those conversations. So, we're working on trying to figure out what's going to get us the best bang. We do have our website. We've got a banner on the front page of the website where we're trying to get as much accurate current information as we can. This will go up on the website tomorrow, or if it's not already up there, the information that Barry shared this evening. And I do think that we're getting, you know, Salem is the big fish, but the news media came to us and they did a live feed from our water treatment plant. So I don't think that we're getting completely ignored in this situation. And we're worse off than they are.
That's my point and I don't think you were making a pun when you said little fish. No, I just, I just, you know, our citizens are keenly aware of this and I had great conversations as recently as this morning and they're trying to try to help us find a solution. I just want them to be assured that it's not like we're just going to wait and see what happens.
Absolutely, right. Yeah. And I, you know, I'll just, I'm really proud of our community. Like, our people know what's going on. We've gone to the ice cream socials and it's on the topic of conversation at the Summerfest. It was the topic of conversation. I don't know that Salem residents understand what is happening. And when we were talking with Salem today, they're like, "Oh, you know, we might need to start messaging how catastrophic this can be." And we're like, "We've already been doing that." You know, and so I feel like it's, I want them to know because they need to be aware. And we are continuing to work the problem and work multiple angles of the problem so that we can...
We are definitely ahead of the curve as far as informing our community is concerned, as it stands right now. And that was quite clear from our discussions this morning.
I agree, I do agree with that.
But I don't have an answer, you know, and that's the challenge. But we have, we have plans. We have multi-pronged approaches to this and that's where we're just going to continue to work on that. Avoid, delay, mitigate, you know, we need money. And we very well may need you and community members to help us beat the drum, you know, when we are asking for money and/or time.
The city of Salem is going to be doing a presentation to the Corps of Engineers within the next two weeks, Julia, I thought it was?
Yeah, I think soon.
And once that has happened, there will be more information available to discuss. The city of Salem has statistical and engineering evaluation information that is not publicly...
It's confidential, in fact.
It's confidential, yeah. So, we, once that is released, there'll be, I mean, we're not privy to it either at the moment, but we know that our assumptions were right from that investigation, that's as far as we can go at the moment. But, once it is released, I think, I would hope that the Corps of Engineers will have sufficient information to start making different decisions to than what they're making today.
And I appreciate that and I, obviously I'm not an attorney, but I, you know, I think from a legal perspective and I just talked to Ross about on the periphery, I think this is a court action, right? This is something from a court action.
Yes.
And the court's being directed to do this. And I guess my question, I don't want an answer now, but I guess my question is, how do you challenge that court decision or the judge's decision? Has that been done or is it even a possibility? This is a rhetorical question. I'm just, I'm trying to think through all the stuff of the angles that we haven't taken yet.
And that's a question for our specialized attorney. So Ross, yes, we've got a special water attorney who's being very involved and looking at all the angles. And right now, the approach is, we really need to work on the core. And then, but again, that, we're watching that, we're trying that, but meanwhile, we're also planning our next levels if necessary. Our lobbyist is also, has a meeting with the core at the state level within the next couple of weeks too. So, I would expect that within the next few weeks, we'll have hopefully some more details of what's been said, what we think, what, if there's additional action items that we can...
May I suggest that you guys have a real good look at this and then come in and we'll have a sit-down discussion about what this says and what the implications are overall?
Yep, sounds good. I do want to give an opportunity for public comment on the agenda, so...
I do have a...
Go ahead, Councillor Ork, real quick.
Clarifying question for Barry. And I know this, like, adding on these, oh, where did it go? The additional filter. I guess, how much is this going to help the mitigation of this issue? Because from what you're saying, that even with these, with Salem's system, with the roughing filtration, with these extra pumps, it's still going to be an issue. So at what point does adding on like this future treatment or this future well, at what point is that spending, literally putting, spending money and putting it down the drain?
In all honesty, I cannot answer that question at the moment, but we have vendors working on that very question as we stand.
I don't expect an answer today. I just, it's one of those where you said like, "They have all these things and they're still worried about it." So at what point is this not even, this mitigation isn't even an option?
Well, you ask a very, very valid question and that's, and that's the question that we're asking of the vendors today. Can we, in actual fact, put in a pretreatment system that will handle up to 1,000 NTU? Handle up to 500 NTU on a consistent basis? Handle up to 200 NTU on an everyday basis for up to two or three months? And we're asking them to look at us and come back and tell us. You know, the city of Salem commented this morning, if I'm allowed to say those words, that the pretreatment that I've said will, in actual fact, help us out, they questioned whether that pretreatment will, in actual fact, work. Now, they didn't quite understand how we were applying the pretreatment and once I explained that, they said, "Oh, okay, now we understand." So it's a potential possibility, but I am not going to hang my hat on what we don't know at the moment. But I will hang our hat on that we're investigating enough, we'll know an answer and we'll be able to tell you in a couple of weeks' time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Mr. Frank? No, you can come sit up real quick, please.
I think we know who I am, it's Steve Frank from Staton. Oh, boy, oh, boy. What an interesting times, certainly with that bond now coming up. So, from the beginning of this process and what's happening, there's no evidence that doing this is going to do anything for the fish. So that's number one. And the legal battle is really important. And I'm wondering, can't we join with Marion County and Salem? I would think that Salem would be happy not to have to spend the money. They're saying it's just discussion at this point. And wouldn't a group lawsuit be much better and much more effective than trying to go it alone? I don't think us going it alone is a very good idea. I'm really disappointed in what I heard from Julia and what Salem had to say. That's really disappointing. I mean, after all we've done and we have provided for them, but I guess that's the way it goes nowadays. I've sent numerous emails, I think, to you and to Julia about different, different issues concerning the drawdown and they could share them with you folks if so be it, if they want to. On the sunny side of things, thankfully, you know, we got to look at the bright side sometimes. On the bright side of things, thankfully, they gave us this extra time. Maybe we can get more time out of the core, hopefully, because it could be happening this fall. It's conceivable that it could have happened this fall. There's a lesson from Lebanon, or from Foster and what happened up there and what they did. Thankfully, on the sunny side, they've learned something not to do that. My understanding is the drawdown will be incremental. It won't be all at once, it won't be as deep, and so it'll be incremental. So there, it's, I understand the cataclysmic perspective, but I, you know, with all that's going on in the world right now, I can't look at this as being cataclysmic at this point and hopefully we can get beyond it. This is a wonderful place, it's a wonderful town and this is a very tough situation. I think the legal battle is our best bet at this point and I don't think we should go it alone. Marion County should be as involved as we are. I think, and I think the congressional delegation, that they had, they had a press release and they seem to be working for us, behind us and interested in what we're doing here. I don't know in the current state of affairs if they can have much, much power to do anything, but they seem to be behind us and want to work with us. So I say, "All the people we can get, all the entities we can possibly get to work with us, the more, the merrier." And hopefully we can, it won't happen the way we're thinking, the worst possible scenario is what I'm hoping for. So, thanks. Oh, boy.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate the comments.
Mr. Frank's comments made me think of a couple of things I want to just add and point on too. So just as a reminder, I think we told council, the, at least Salem is not interested in joining forces legally. We are still collaborating, but we, there wasn't, everybody's issues are unique in their own and so that's why we're doing it alone. And I, Barry, maybe you can chime in, but I guess another strategy or another hope is a delay. I don't know that we're going to get them to delay beyond 2026, but they have to do the SEIS before they can go to the next step. And depending on what information that reveals, it could result in additional delay. So I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, Barry? And I might be, it will be catastrophic if it occurs without mitigation in place. And that's the message that we just need everybody to, it can't happen or we will not have water. So, you know, we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that it doesn't happen without mitigation so that we are not a city of 8,200, 8,400 that doesn't have water. That's where I'm at. Barry, do you want to say anything about the SEIS and that timing?
I'll add on the ESA statement that it took them five years to do the original investigation and come out with a finding. They're hoping to do that in six months this time. Now, in all reality, I commend them if they do, but I am questioning whether that is realistic. And that gives us a glimmer of hope at the end of the day that perhaps it could be delayed as Julia's saying because of either the result or the non-finding at the end of the day. Now, the two things that they're actually looking at are the dam hydro insufficient, no, sorry, they're wanting to close down the hydro production and the endangered species associated with public, are people first or fish first is really the statement that's coming out as far as that's concerned. So, have we had sufficient input? I don't know. I don't know if our statement or our notes that we send and commented on the, oh, God, I get it wrong. E, come on, help me. Yeah. Are sufficient to, in actual fact, make them change or stop, but we had an opportunity to comment, we'll have another opportunity to comment. I'm just...
Thank you. Thanks, Barry. Councillor, anything else on this before we move on? Appreciate it, Barry. All right, Julia, communication from the city staff?
Sorry. I have a few things. I just wanted to... Sorry. I have a few things. I just wanted to let counsel know. I know Counselor Sims was asking last week about the downtown parking. We did confirm that the state has received this. They actually said that we're a really good candidate for a downtown parking plan, but funding is currently an issue. So really, we're going to wait and see kind of where things fall out there at that level. To evaluate traffic flow, geometry, things like that for increased parking, we would need to have an engineered, an engineering analysis done that we don't currently have project budget or time for, but we'll continue to monitor that grant. And then we'll also look at, as the year progresses, if staff and/or budget allows, look at whether or not we have the bandwidth and ability to do that in-house. I wanted just to mention that we did send a letter to ODOT regarding the park and ride closure. We got a response back that said he's waiting for Sublimity, and then they will make a decision. And I forwarded that to the city of Sublimity because I thought that they had already made a comment. I haven't heard back from them, but I just wanted to make sure that they knew that ODOT was waiting for them. I just wanted to remind counsel of the LOC conference, the LOC conference that's coming up in October. Counselor Sims has, actually, Counselor Sims, Patty Orton have attended in the past. Counselor Sims has indicated he would like to attend. We have budget for two to four of you. We have budgeted over the biennial budget for spots, so if more than two wanted to attend, we could make that happen. And then I just wanted to make sure that we have conversation, maybe this is part of your discussion, but I wanted just to mention the ice cream socials. We've had all but one of them. The next one is Tuesday, National Night Out at Pioneer Park. We'll have hot dogs in addition to the ice cream. But we've had really good turnouts. The one on Friday, which I thought was going to be dead, we actually had about 36 people show up, too. The, I think we had about as many at the one at Sandy Am Park. Really good conversations. I feel like people weren't just coming for ice cream. They were coming and having conversations. And so, you know, I don't know if counselors want to share anything that they specifically heard. We will have Howard in a few meetings, give a, at the end of the summer, kind of give a report out of kind of all the summer activities. But if there's anything that specifically struck you that you want us to follow up on or that you wanted to share, I would be happy to hear that.
Mr. Mayor? Not necessarily anything to follow up on, but to your point of, like, people being knowledgeable and asking questions about the drawdown and what that means to the community. I had some discussions about that. So our community is engaged and is listening and trying to, I think, look to us to figure out what's going on and what we're doing about it. So I think that just reinforces your statement on that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Orton.
Thank you. Ice cream socials have been a really great opportunity for engagement and just some surprising conversations overall. I've been able to attend them, all of them at this point. And I just want to thank all the citizens who came out and took time to give feedback. It's been helpful. One common thread that we did note, as far as the dam drawdown that I thought was notable, is I was able to discuss this with somebody, and there's actually a place on our city webpage where you can go, and it's an easy button for folks to find. So if anybody's curious about this at home and they'd like more information, just pop onto the city webpage and go on there, and there's more information about what you can do and things like that. The other thing, too, is I wanted to just thank Council President Steve Sims for going on the news and getting information about this issue out there, because I have heard more about this now than I have ever, and it's made me so much more relieved that people finally know what's going on with it. So thank you so much for the time you took. And I know that was an out-of-the-blue interview, and that is so stressful, and I do not envy you at all. And so, thank you. The other thing, too, is I just wanted to see if we couldn't coordinate some sort of dispensation of brochures and materials about Habitat for Humanity. That is one thing that came up over there at Sandy Am Park with, I can't remember her name. Julia remembers her name. The gal who heads up Habitat for Humanity, there's actually a home in Staton. And so you can, I guess, apply if you meet certain thresholds. You can also participate and volunteer for that program, which I thought would be a cool opportunity for counsel to maybe pitch in and take a shift on a Saturday for a couple hours or something like that. I thought that would be neat. So just a couple of things I wanted to chip in from the ice cream socials. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Patty, for that. Yeah, the Habitat for Humanity, I didn't realize that we had a house in Staton that was being built, and they are looking for volunteers. I asked for details. It's, they need at least five people and four hours. No experience needed. So if there's any interest, any interest from counsel, I'm also going to see if there's an interest in staff, you know, maybe having a group, I'd be happy to try to coordinate something like that.
Do you know if there's an age limit on that? Is it 18 and over?
I don't know.
That's okay. I can look.
I think that's all the updates I have, unless you have questions for me.
Anybody have questions for Julia? Counselor Sims?
Yeah, I had one thing. The, so good job on the Summer Fest and the attendance by the city staff on that. I mean, that was, I think you got a lot of questions also during Summer Fest. But I would suggest, just a suggestion, that maybe we do some sort of shift with the counselors there, because they had a lot of, a significant number of questions at Summer Fest, and I think that might be nice to have one of us there, you know, maybe each of us do an hour or something like that, or, you know, something. I think that might be pretty beneficial for everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Sims. Very good. I was going to ask you about, any new updates about the cemetery? I see it's, looks like it's been concluded, but-
Yeah, no, unfortunately. I did, I still need, I want to get a contact so that I actually am talking to somebody. I did call my contact through the Odd Fellows, who isn't directly related to the cemetery, and told him I still hadn't heard anything. And he said that they generally take the summer off, and so he'll reach out. So I do have some people in the Odd Fellows, but the person who's responsible for it has not gotten back to me.
It looks, it appears to be that the entire portion that was in question has been mowed.
Yeah. I think it has been. My concern is that it will continue, it will get into a state of disrepair again, and I'd like to have that, an open channel so that we can help facilitate or have a conversation if and when it gets to that point again.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Orton.
I saw on Facebook someone was power washing the wall.
Yeah, so did I. Looks good. I just was wondering if, never mind.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if that, if they just do it.
I think he was promoting his business on-
Sure.
No, it looks good. I appreciate the initiative.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Scary.
Real quick, this is kind of a tough one for me, because I'm a member of the Moose, but I'd also like to move forward with maybe some discussion down the road. I know their building is not in the best shape right now. I do want to give them a shout out because they did allow us to plug our spud bus into the Moose Lodge as a member, which saved a lot of generator noise. But I'd like to, I've got a printout at home that I didn't bring tonight, that talks about everything they've done over the last 20 years, and it's pretty detailed. And I'd like to just maybe put it on the agenda in the future, have them come in and share.
Yeah, we can absolutely invite them as a partner, similar to the Marion Water and Soil Conservation District. I think that their meetings conflict with our meetings so that that's, they can make a modification. I will say, and I haven't talked a lot about this publicly, but we are working on trying to still negotiate the lease. As part of that, we've done some inspections of the building just to get a better sense of what's going on, and we're evaluating that to really, we probably will end up having an executive session with counsel once we have more information so we really know what we're dealing with.
I do know the grounds have been kept real nice lately, you know, big transformation.
All right. Thank you. I guess it's my opportunity. Julia, I think, I just want to confirm tomorrow is National Night Out, correct?
Yes, I think I did say next Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Appreciate that. And I appreciate Counselor Patty recognizing Counselor Sims and using the word relieved, because I, too, was relieved that I didn't have to do that interview. One of the benefits of having to be out of town for 14 days. And that was an impromptu request. I think that was, I was checking my email. For whatever reason, I clicked on the city email. I'm like, oh, I'm out of this one. Steve, take it. So I appreciate that interview you did at the last minute. I think you represented the city well, so thank you for doing that, Steve. I appreciate it. Any updates to the vacancy down the aisle here, on the table?
So we've got it advertised on the website and social media, saying that we are, and I think in our newsletter, we'll have an article on it, indicating that we're seeking letters of interest. I think it's fairly new, just last week, that we put that out there, so, but no, no letters or interests, so to speak.
All right. I just want to say that today I was asked to participate as the mayor in a fundraising event for the hospital. For levity and brevity for everybody, I was serving tea to the ladies, so it was pretty fun. Great organization. They were trying to build funds for a women's center there at the hospital. And so myself and lots of the surgeons and the doctors there participated, and it was a, it was a good time. So, with that, that's the kind of fun things you get to do at mayor every once in a while. With that, anything else, counsel? I'll see you everybody tomorrow night. Adjourned.